Hi Pete.
Hey Katie.
Hi Mike.
Hey Mike.
Pete.
Hi, everybody.
Hey Mike.
Pete, I assume did Pat take Walter a copy of the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, is he going to be our timer?
Uh, I would imagine so.
Okay, okay. Tom's gonna be a little late.
Okay. So Doug? What's happening?
Doug, how are you?
You gotta unmute yourself.
Good evening.
Do do do.
Singing?
Oh yeah. Happening, Mike?
Not much.
Yeah, there you are. Mike, are you still in the south or are you back in the north?
I'm in Milford.
Oh, well, welcome back.
Good to be back. Thanks Katie. Okay, so, hey Doug, alright, so about 10 minutes to go time here. Pete, you want me to run that video real quick and start collecting names?
Yeah.
Alright, here we go. And I'll be your Zoom meeting administrator for tonight's town council meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM Eastern. Before the meeting starts, I put together this brief instructional video to help you get better acquainted with the Zoom meetings platform and how this virtual town council meeting will operate. Before we get started, we would like to kindly ask non-council participants to please keep your audio and video muted throughout unless called upon. As you are brought into the meeting, for example, from a waiting room, you will have the momentary ability to unmute your video. We kindly ask that you refrain from doing so, and each participant's video will be manually muted upon entry one at a time. If you do not want to see non-video participants, hover your mouse over a non-video participant's video image. Click these three dots highlighted in blue and select hide non-video participants. If you want to see all the councilmen at the same time, rather than focusing only on the councilman who is speaking, select gallery view in the top right corner of the viewing panel. If you would like to participate in public comment, you must first raise your hand, and you'll be added to the list of public comment participants on a first come, first served basis until the meeting's commencement at 7:00 PM. When we say raise your hand, we don't mean literally hold your hand up to the camera. To raise your hand, first make sure the participants panel is open at the right of your screen. You can open the participants panel by clicking the participants icon at the bottom of your screen. Once the participants panel is open, to raise your hand, select raise hand in the bottom right corner of the participants panel. For telephone-only participants, to raise your hand, press star nine on your telephone touchpad. I'll be taking names for public comment as soon as this video finishes, and at the mayor's request, we'll be calling on participants for public comment on a first come, first served basis. Once you're called upon, I will send out a request to unmute yourself, as you will be self-muted upon entry. To unmute yourself in desktop, click the unmute icon in the bottom left corner of the viewing panel, and which looks like a microphone with a red slash through it, or simply select unmute in the request message. For telephone-only participants, press star six to mute or unmute yourself. Once you've been unmuted for public comment, you'll have five minutes to address the council. When your time is expired, the sergeant-at-arms will let you know, and I will then mute you at either the mayor's request or at the request of the sergeant-at-arms. I will only act upon their instruction throughout the meeting, and will neither mute nor unmute except upon entry any participant otherwise. For the record, as a Zoom meeting administrator, I will not be an active participant in the meeting. This means once the meeting has started, my camera and microphone will be muted unless otherwise called upon by either the mayor or the sergeant-at-arms. The final request before this video ends is to please be aware of your surroundings. Please be aware of background noise such as dogs barking, children yelling, or nearby fan blowing, visible background activity, and potential feedback from your microphone picking up the sound from your speakers. It is for this reason that we highly recommend the use of headphones. Thank you for watching. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, and if you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hands now and do not put them down until called upon for public comment after the meeting has commenced. Okay, so you guys saw the video. I'm still letting folks in. So you've got five, three minutes to go time here, folks. Get those hands raised. Walter's got his hand raised. Walter, I've sent you an invitation to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
Pete, while I'm here, is there anyone likely to unmute as we bring the meeting in here?
Uh.
I see Dan Calhoun, Karen Pollard.
If we could undo Dan and Karen Pollard.
Alright.
Mary Jane.
Hi, how's everybody?
Good, how you doing? Good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Alright, one minute to go. I don't have anybody with their hands up, so last chance, folks, to raise your hand. That means to go into the participants panel, and in the bottom right, there will be three dots that will, there'll be, um, sorry, and the bottom right, there should be a raise hand option. So this is your last chance, folks.
Mike, if you could unmute Mike Nahom.
Uh, where are we here?
M and Nahom.
Got him.
Michael Sinello, just so you know, when I mute myself, I can't come back on. So is there a way?
No, there isn't any way to do that. I have to send you the invitation every time. That's why as soon as I see somebody mute, I just ask, ask to unmute right away.
Okay, alright. I'll try to be quiet.
Mike, can we also unmute Jeremy Levin?
Invitation sent to Jeremy.
Mike, thank you so much. Hello, Mayor.
Hi Jeremy.
Mayor, what about Randy DeBella? Do you want to unmute him?
He's already unmuted.
He is? Oh, I see him muted, but.
He muted himself.
Yeah, so like I said, I have to send that invitation out the second that happens, and he can choose to accept it or not.
There you go.
And Ken, I know that you're not going to want to unmute yourself right away, so I'm just going to send you the invitation, and you don't have to accept it.
Hey guys.
Mike, shouldn't we all stay muted until the, until we start talking?
Uh, that would be great. I'm going to, as soon as, as soon as you mute yourself, I'm going to send you an invitation to unmute. Just don't click, just don't accept the invitation until you're ready to talk.
Okay.
I would rather stay unmuted.
That's fine, Walter.
I would rather stay unmuted.
Hmm.
Okay.
Alright, well, I've got no one, hold on, I got two more to go. Um, it looks like the meeting is yours, Pete. We're at seven o'clock.
Okay.
On my list so far.
If we could all stand for the pledge. Katie, could you listen to the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have a moment of silence for Representative John Lewis on his passing, and also for the men and women in the armed forces and our first responders. Thank you.
Pete, can I check again? It looks like I have Katie Francis, Doug Skelly, Michael Gold, Mary Jane, Paul Bear, and Mike Nahom. Is that, is that everybody who's on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a public participation. Mike, do we have anybody?
Uh, no, we do not, but just as a heads up, David Lawson's just signing in right now.
Okay, great. Did you get that, Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna ask one more time. If anybody would like to go to public participation, please raise your hand, so that Mr. Sinello can see it. Mike, do we have anyone?
Still no one with their hand raised.
Okay, going once, going twice, three times. Okay, Katie, next. Mayor's marks. I'd like to just briefly update the council on a few things. One, I'm speaking with Mike Cresspin today. Our COVID-19 confirmed case numbers, as we talked about prior to, these are just numbers of people that have been confirmed since the beginning of the stats. So the state of Connecticut is at 46,994. Litchfield County is at 1,504. That's up nine from Monday. Hospitalizations, thank goodness, were still at zero in Litchfield County. New Milford currently is at 305, and that is still unchanged from last week as well. So those are all good news. We still ask all of our residents to wear a mask when out in public. Please continue to practice the six-foot social distancing, and please practice hand hygiene as well. Pursuant to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7-III, anyone traveling in Connecticut from a state that's, uh, has a new daily positive test rate higher than 10 per 100,000 residents, or a state with a 10% or higher positivity rate over seven-day rolling average, is asked to self-quarantine for 14 days. As of June 21st, there are 31 states that are on this list. That is Alaska, Alabama, Arkansas, Arizona, California, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Iowa, Idaho, Indiana, Kansas, Louisiana, Maryland, Missouri, Mississippi, Montana, North Carolina, North Dakota, Nebraska, New Mexico, Nevada, Ohio, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Utah, Virginia, Washington, and Wisconsin. And that governor asks, if you are visiting those states, when you do come back, please self-quarantine for 14 days. If you have someone you know that's coming to visit you from those states, we're asking them to self-quarantine for 14 days. This is all in efforts to keep us, as we continue to bend the curve for COVID. This is just to provide additional safety to our residents here in New Milford and the state. I'd also like to congratulate our new community youth advocate Natalie Rodriguez from the youth agency. She replaces Jason O'Connor, who is now our youth agency director. So congratulations, Natalie. Quickly on our roadwork, so far this year, in our roadwork, we've completed McNulty Drive, Old Parkwood Road, Polaris Drive, Warwick Drive, Short Drive, Forest Drive, Gretel, Mist Hill, Wellsville, Eagle Drive, Carmen Hill 1 and 2, with some slight bullet points that we have to complete on Carmen Hill 1 and 2. We're continuing to work on Gardan Road. The drainage replacement's been completed. On Geiger Road, we began the drainage replacement. On Wapum, Indian Ridge, Arrowhead, we reclaimed the pavement and began some grading there. On Brentwood, Cobbler Lane, drainage repair, and we're looking to execute the contract with Grass. On our two-look week ahead, we're looking to start the Long Mountain, the upper part of Long Mountain Road, where we'll be raising or replacing a catchtop basis drain pipes, then reclaiming and grading. And then on Brentwood and Cobbler Lane, we're still doing drainage repair. Library, the renovation work has begun. If you'd like to go and take a look inside. Also, for the New Milford Police Department, I'm happy to announce that for the first quarter of 2020, our crime statistics had a decrease of 5.3%. That's in addition to the overall reduction last year of 10.2%. So thank you to our New Milford Police Department. And that's all I have right now, Katie. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to spend the rules to add item number 10, Parks and Rec donation.
Second.
Any discussion, any discussion on adding to the agenda a park and rec donation?
Who seconded it?
Tom.
Tom did.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Katie?
Okay, we have Dr. Jeremy Levin has got a presentation for us.
Dr. Levin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I believe you're gonna help. Is that right?
Yes, one second.
Thank you kindly.
Okay, so you guys should see that.
Okay, I'll talk over it. And Mike, every time I ask you to shift a slide, if you'd be kind enough to do so, I'd be super grateful.
Gladly.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for taking the time to invite me today, and again, to let me give you an update. What I thought I would do is really break this presentation into some parts that I think would be helpful for everybody, and for perhaps the attendees who are coming in, but certainly as you're thinking about policy. The presentation will cover, number one, global COVID. That's less helpful, but it just gives you the perspective of where we are in the United States. Secondly, what we're looking like in the United States. Then, thirdly, what I thought we'd do is take a quick look at some of the new therapies that are being developed. Then I want to walk you through what is big news today in the vaccines, where the vaccines stand, and what vaccines look like, and what they're likely to be. And then at the end, I'm going to change direction a little bit. I want to change direction and talk about what do we know about the facts that we know about children today? And so from my perspective, I won't touch on some of the things that you know on, but please, if you feel you'd like to interrupt me in the mayor, it's okay. I'll let me to, to answer your questions if that's appropriate. Mike, if you'd flip to the first slide, please. So this is pretty catastrophic right now. It looks like we have a, this is truly a pandemic, as we all know. It's getting worse, and we just can't believe some of the numbers we're seeing. To be fair, I think what you're seeing in India is an underestimate. People aren't reporting, and if you go into the slums of Mumbai, you won't even begin to understand how many people have got it. I think there's little doubt that Russia's lying completely, just underreporting massively. On the other hand, across Europe, you're seeing some good signs, particularly in Northern Europe. Not a lot of good news coming out of Spain at the moment. They're having a recurrence. Italy, a lot of good news coming out of there. Brazil is actually a black box right now. Again, the evidence of what's going on, you really ought to be rather curious about. The president said he had COVID. There's no evidence he actually had COVID. These are uncomfortable numbers as you look at them. The only place that we know we're getting better and better numbers now are the United States and some of the European nations. So we can rely on those. And at least they're telling what we know to be the truth, because testing is really going up in these areas in a way that it could be. Why, that's the, that's the situation, but note, please, that 16 million reported, and really 700,000, going up 700,000 dead. Next slide, please. So, United States is, we unfortunately are now, for our size, we really do have a huge number of places relative to even the best nations elsewhere. The, the pattern is not good, everybody. I just want you to note that while we did the job here in the Northeast, you know, thank you, Mayor, thank everybody here, boy, I think, you know, the heavy lifting that was done stands a real risk of being unwound by some of the southern states where nobody admitted they had a problem, and they really had a problem, and it's getting worse. Unfortunately, there is a strong possibility, and I was so glad to hear the mayor mention those, the rules and regs of people coming from those states. They really had to take, give some respect to everybody who have suffered in this period and gone through what some of them have gone through. But I do hope that they'll take note. We don't want infections brought up from the south at this stage. Next slide, Pete. So, look, I've shown this before, but I just want you to, I would like the council to understand, since January this year, when there were two programs, in total, two in the United States, number of, of programs have progressed massively. This is unprecedented in the history of the United States. Never seen anything like it. And certainly, I've been 35 years in the 30-plus years, sorry, not 35, 30-plus years in the pharmaceutical and biotech world. I've never seen anything like this at all. It's astounding. Discounting the treatments for current drugs, 306 of them. Those are current drugs that have been used and being tried out. There are only two that work. We mentioned these before. One is dexamethasone. That's a steroid. It's an old drug. And the other one is a drug remdesivir from Gilead. Those two have almost no effect on people at home. People who are in the hospital, dexamethasone will help you as you get off the respirator, and saves lives there. Remdesivir appears to, in total, get more people out of hospital, but they're definitely not a cure-all or a fix-all, that's for sure. On the vaccine front, we now have, I'm going to come back to that in depth, but we have a lot of them, a lot of them. And they're different, because vaccines normally take between 10 to 15 years to develop. And here we are. We, I'll tell you about exactly where we are within a minute, but the bottom line is, in six months, we've gone from zero to a bunch, a bunch who are really entering clinical-stage development. And I will explain what I mean by that in a minute. The antivirals are the things that actually attack the virus itself and kill it off, mobilize the body's defenses. We're a little behind there, although it looks like a lot of them, there, the last time I spoke to you, there were two, there were 150 of them. Now there are 208 of them. So there's a lot going on in that area, but nothing that's going to be near term. In summary, near term, you've got two things that we know have some benefit. Vaccines, we think the first vaccine might, and I repeat the word, might be available in January. Will not be available generally. I'll explain that in a minute. It will, it certainly, if it works, we really won't know very much about it yet. But at that stage, you should expect the first hint that we have a genuine vaccine in next January. And the antivirals, it could be anywhere by middle of next year. Next slide, please. So I want to walk you through the vaccines, and the reason I do this is because of the firm belief by absolutely all those in not knowledgeable in the area. Sorry, we lost that slide. Mike, thank you. The, the fact of the matter is, without a vaccine, this will become quite a problem to deal with. The, you won't be able to think of it like flu until we can get a vaccine. The flu is endemic. It comes and it goes, and it comes and it goes, and we get used to it. Without a vaccine, this thing will just keep on going. There's little doubt of that. And the best protection we'll have at that moment will be wearing a mask, washing your hands, and keeping social distance. There is absolutely no evidence it's going away. Please understand that. It's very important for us to understand that. But we can deal with it. We definitely can deal with it, and we must deal with it. And the reason, we have sensible ways of dealing with that, and we already have implemented many of them. And as Connecticut will probably take the lead in that, as will probably New York. So where are we in this pipeline? Well, today, there are two announcements made. One by a company, Moderna, that they're on what's called Phase Three. Phase, the thing called IND on this preclinical says, I'm trying to figure out, how do I even make a vaccine? Okay, that's what preclinical is. And IND means that the FDA have accepted what you have found, and they're going to allow you to propose to test it. Normally, these things take three to four years. Six months, we've got a lot of them going on now. 126 in preclinical, three in the IND stage. The phase one stage, normally that's a two-year process. Phase one means I'm testing this on normal volunteers. This is now, we're, we're going at light speed here. We've been doing this over two to three months. People have been doing these tests instead of two to three years. You pass from phase one to phase two. In phase two, you ask the question, okay, I know that it's safe in, in adults. I now want to test, does it have some kind of an effect? Can I raise antibodies in it? Can I get your body to start producing some kind of resistance? Phase two, again, we've got 10 of, in that, at this stage, and there's a 10 different programs. They're nowhere close to what you need to be, which is phase three. Now, phase three is the moment where you say, I am going to take what I thought, I know that it's safe. I know that it raises an antibody, and I know it might mobilize the white cells to give me longer-term memory in my immune system to fight this again. Now, phase three is generally a huge trial. In the normal vaccine, you can have up to 20,000 people taking it, and you'll take it for two to three years to figure out, is it effective, and is it safe, and does it knock the, does it knock the disease down? So this process that I've described to you, at best, is normally an eight-to-10-year program. We've got to where we are in six months. Now, several companies announced today that they are heading into phase three. The first of these is Moderna, and so we should feel very encouraged by this. The FDA has mobilized, the companies have mobilized, and the size of the trial looks like it's appropriate. About 5,000 patients, as I understand it. Next slide, please. So allow me to teach you, a vaccine is not a vaccine, and it's not a vaccine. They're all different. This is a picture of a virus. A virus is a tiny creature. It doesn't have any machinery in it. What you see is the little red spokes. Those are proteins that stick out from the cells. Then it's got a fatty cover. That's the, the cover, what you see there, that purple little squares, that's actually kind of like a fatty bubble. It's really, it's just the proteins are sticking into it, and in the middle of it, it wraps around a bunch of genetic material called RNA. And that genetic material is what decides what kind of protein sit on the outside. Now, this little package hasn't got any of the machinery that you do inside your cells for multiplying. It just doesn't. It needs, it's like a parasite. It needs to get into you, hijack your cell, and start manufacturing it. It's very clever at doing that. It sticks to certain proteins in your lung, gets into your bloodstream, gets into the cells, and forces the cell to start manufacturing it. So it's a clever little beast, and, but we've seen anything like this before. The most obvious thing that you have to attack is that red spike. You have to figure out a block that red spike was sticking to. Are there different ways of doing this? Next slide, please. So there are six different ways, and Mayor, just stop me if I'm going on too long, okay? Just, just say enough. The six different ways, I'll walk you through them. The first is the one that we all know. We've all had this. They're made, checked, they take their vaccines for influenza, chickenpox, measles, mumps, and rubella. You take that whole vaccine, you, you, inactivated by a whole series of different processes, so it can't cause disease. That's very tough to do, very difficult in the past, but we figured out how to do it with other vaccines, and we've done it. That's an approach being adopted in Oxford, not by what you have in the United States right now. That's worked before. It should work again, but let's see. We don't have good evidence yet that it does work. We know when you do that, you can raise antibodies. We know when you do that, you can raise antibodies, but we don't know if we have a vaccine yet. And there are two different genetic vaccines, these are made from the genes of that, of the COVID virus itself. And these genes are the information that is encoded that allows the virus to make those red little spikes. So what you basically do is you take a circle of these genes, a circle of natural DNA, which is normal kind of genes, which don't hurt you, and you stick into them a bad gene. And then you stick that into the body, and the body makes the bad proteins, and the body reacts to the bad proteins. And that's kind of how you do the same thing with the other kind of gene, which is called RNA. And then what you see here, in both of those cases, there are no human vaccines ever developed, but these two vaccine types are what are being developed extensively right now. Next slide, please. Now, there is another way of doing this, you can package the gene for that virus, for those little red proteins, into another kind of virus that doesn't harm you. Each one of us is populated by, actually, millions of viruses, and we don't actually know what most, they don't do harm to us. So you can package them into a harmless one virus, and you can say, here, you've manufactured this protein, and then your body reacts to it and creates a process whereby it can now recognize the bad COVID and attack it when it arrives. Now, there are lots of actually good examples of that happening, and I'm glad to say that Johnson &amp; Johnson developed good vaccines for HIV, Ebola vaccines, and these are good, they're, they're safe in humans, we know that. Then lastly, there are two different kinds, they both say, let's take these bad proteins that stick to the human body, let's put them either in a, in some kind of globular fat that isn't a virus, or have them by themselves, and we'll inject them into you. And there are good examples of these working. For example, there is a HPV vaccine, which many young women have had in this country, a very good vaccine, does a lot of good, stops cancer of the cervix, very well done, and really, I'm thrilled, that's a good story, it stopped a lot of cancer, that. Then there's the recombinant ones, which are just proteins that you manufacture and inject into people. Now, these, some of us probably around the table have had this, we've been to Walmart, as I did, and got my Shingex shot, that's one that I, was made this way. So there's six different ways I've shown you, they're all active, the purpose that I show you them is not to confuse you with the science, but to say the following, there's six different shots on goal right now. Couple of these, actually more than them, are now in Phase Three, one of them is highly likely to deliver something in January. It will not be available because to manufacture this, you have to manufacture hundreds and millions of doses. And just to put those factories in place, each one of these six, each one of the six has to have a different kind of factory, and it costs upwards of $400 million to build one factory. So the government is spending billions, companies are spending billions, do at risk to make these factories, but I'm optimistic that one of them will work. I hate to say it, the money spent on the other factories is probably going to be lost. Alternatively, they're all going to work, and then we're going to have lots of choice, and we're going to ask which one works best. So I'm going to stop talking about the vaccines, but that's exactly what we've got right now, and I'd like to switch to the kids, unless you have a specific question for the vaccine, why can't we do it till the end? Okay, I'll move to the next, next slide, this really will be my last slide. So a lot of people I've spoken to in town asked me about kids, and to be honest, finding the data on kids was really tough. There's so much speculation, there's so much fake news, there's so much absence of pure science that says the data is the data is the data. And I'm afraid that this is not comfortable. So what I've tried to do here is really look for the facts, and some of these are very encouraging. And it's kind of interesting, and perhaps you'll take home a positive message from this. In the U.S., there's only evidence that 17 children under the age of five have died of COVID-19. That's tiny, in comparison to flu. Okay, this is, this is important, but that's a fact, as of the, earlier this month. I think there's a lot of different independent ways that you can verify this, I, I'll, and we can go through it, but that's important. In, then you go to the, Iceland's got 700,000 people, and so they tested the whole nation, everybody. And literally, those under the age of 10, they didn't find any new vaccines. So the question was kept on saying, why is it, if you have, these kids aren't getting the disorder? I don't, I saw the Chinese studies, to be honest, I'm, I am, I'm open to listening to the data, but I, we need to see some more robust data from China, but the best other data is from China. Children were less likely, that, that's the best I can say to you, I can't give you exact figures from their data. So why do the kids, these young kids, appear to interact differently from us? The answer is that it appears, under the age of 10, that there doesn't appear to be the receptors, that they, they have different type of lung development, the lung hasn't fully developed. So the virus, those little red pegs, the proteins, don't have anything they can stick on. And that means that, in fact, the kids, the little guys, do not have the likelihood of getting infected as much as we have, and are likely, if they do get infected, to really brush it off from what we can see. Now, the younger they are, the less likely they are to spread it out. Somebody has said this is all to do with the lungs. I don't buy that, folks, the reason why I don't buy it is like a parent, and every one of us has known, your kid comes back from the nursery and they've got flu, you get flu. It's not, so this is not to do with the size of the lung, this has to do with the fact that these kids are resisting the virus more than we do as adults. All the virus just doesn't get into them. So I think there's some encouraging news there for the pre, for the younger kids, for 10 and below, a little uncertain once you get 10 and above, I think you have to give those as being, having the higher likelihood of being infected, and if they do, passing it on, although they won't suffer from severe effects. And what we're seeing now is that in the South, a lot of the camps that were opened up are now closing down because of younger children getting the, getting COVID, and some of them getting sick or bringing it home to their parents. So there's a, there's a problem that we have to think about there. Lastly, several of you asked last week separately, once we finished the week before, about Kawasaki, there was a lot of press about this, this is a catastrophic disease. Basically, all this, all of, all of the blood vessels of the children get inflamed, but it is incredibly rare, and that absolutely no link has been demonstrated between Kawasaki and COVID. So this was a chance finding of hundreds of millions of people, couple cases, and people extrapolated from that. So in summary, little children appeared to get it less, they die less from it, but we should take home the fact that once they get above 10, it's probable that they will be able to carry the infection and pass it on to adults. So with that, I'll stop, next slide, please. Most of the data here, next, that's the other way, I guess, actually, one more, thank you. Most of this information is available to you, just could you show that for one second? Go back to Mike, sorry about that. At the Biotechnology Innovation Organization, this is over 1,000 companies, this is a great resource, I can tell you that because I've been, in January, we set it in place, the, all the information that you need and the tools needs is there, all you have to go to is www.bio.org, and the information is there. I happen to be sharing it this year, which is why Mayor Pete asked me if I'd be, if they'd advise you. So I'll stop for a moment, and I'll answer any questions that one have.
Councilman Gold?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Levin, thanks for presenting the information to us. In your experience, or what you're seeing around the world, are there other countries developing vaccines, and if so, are they using them?
Yes, Michael, they are, we have them in two countries that I'm aware of. Number one, Great Britain is definitely developing it, it's out of Oxford with AstraZeneca, that's a whole vaccine, it's an old-fashioned kind, and that doesn't mean it won't work, could work real good. And then we know factually that China is attempting to do this, there have been some rumors of things being developed in India, but there's no evidence yet of anything of consequence yet coming out of it.
Do you see these, do you see these countries sharing their information with us?
Yes, actually, I do. I think that, I know that the Oxford Group is sharing with, with the U.S. I have less doubt, less, less confidence, Michael, that we'll get that same level of sharing from China or from Russia if they ever develop it. To the contrary, I suspect that they're probably trying to get that information from us.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great information.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Levin.
Well, done with that?
Yep.
Okay, so let's move on to item five, our consent agenda, move to accept item 5A and 5C. 5B has nothing to report, so.
We have a second.
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 Okay, second by Mary Jane, any discussion?
I'm just going to abstain from the minutes.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
And we have an abstention on the minutes from Councilman Skelly.
Item six, move the appointment and reappointment of the following committees, Recycling Committee Two, temporary committee with five members, all from July 27, 2020 to January 26, 2021. Conservation Commission, one, a new person came up, same, July 27, 2020, January 31, 2024, that's a four-year term. And the Library Modernization and Construction Committee Two, another temporary committee, 15 members, July 27, 2020 through January 26 of 2021.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Walter, and just for the minutes, Stephanie, both recycling and library are the same committee members as prior.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Buxter has taken over the, the seat of Michael John Cavallaro's passing. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, item seven, motion to approve the authorization of our mayor to execute the Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant Agreement for the grant period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Could we unmute Tammy? Mike, so Tammy can talk briefly about the grant. Thanks, Mike, Tammy?
Good evening, everyone, thank you. So back in March, before the world of COVID exploded, we submitted an application to the Connecticut Department of Housing for a technical assistance grant in the value of $15,000. I spoke with the mayor at that time, and I spoke with Laura Regan, and New Milford does need to develop an affordable housing plan, and based on the workload that Laura currently has and the multitude of responsibilities, being our zoning enforcement officer, land use officer, planning officer, she needs some assistance. So the application was put into the state to use this $15,000 to hire a consultant to assist Laura in developing an affordable housing plan that is, mirrors what is currently being reviewed and adjusted in our plan of conservation and development. I spoke with Laura about this, and she does have a few concerns because the state has not yet put out the guidelines for what the requirements of an affordable housing plan actually look like. They will be taking this topic up at the next session in the legislature, so that could be as late as January when they reconvene, but we have plenty of time to get a consultant on board, get some information moving along, and develop the plan, pay the consultant, and then submit for reimbursements.
Any questions for Tammy? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Item number eight would be our update from Karen Pollard, Director of Economic Development.
Karen?
Is that better?
Yes.
Near you.
Okay. So, um, thank you very much for recognizing me to do a quick update of where we are locally in our economic development activity. I'd like to step back just a couple weeks to our bond rating. I know that you are all very familiar with the exceptional job that the Finance Department did in improving that rating and getting these amazing rates on new bond issues as well as refinancing. Economic activity, a critical factor in bond rating analysis, and I was able to provide some information to the Finance Department at the mayor's request to support the picture that we painted to demonstrate that even with COVID, our building permit activity has been nearly 200% of last year's. The only month that we did not exceed last year's 2019 levels was the month of May, in which case we were actually about 60% of last year. But about 35% of that activity this year has been in industrial and commercial activity. So, and, and you will certainly recall that those projects tend to be much larger in dollar amount, they involve larger companies to install. So while we have many, many more, a much greater number of permits, we still have a lot of economic development activity in industrial and commercial businesses, particularly in expansion mode or in plans that have continued regardless of COVID crisis. Unemployment was another major factor that continues to be of high interest to everyone. We currently have approximately 1,400 people unemployed in New Milford, that's an effective rate of 9.2% unemployment. We are well below the state average of 10% and the national average of 11.1%. So one of our major priorities is reopening businesses and putting people back to work as soon as we can. We are currently in Phase Two of Governor Lamont's reopening strategies, and that means that we still have minimal inside activity on many businesses required. So we're at 50% inside of restaurants, however, many of our restaurants have expanded their outdoor dining and continue to do so. So we have continued to approve plans for outside dining, including the addition of tents because of inclement weather. There have been also changes to some of the requirements for businesses to reopen. New guidance was issued on July 20 by the DECD office at the state, and that was all distributed to the folks in the email blasts that I do regularly. And in addition, that has made a lot of news across the state, and hopefully, we've been able to reach everyone. Health Department and I continue to work closely together to work with all those licensed businesses to make sure that they're alert to any new rules or instructions that come out, and to make sure that if they can open and they feel comfortable doing so, that they have the tools to do that. The Corporation for New Milford Economic Development repurposed about $17,000 to buy sneeze, Plexiglas sneeze guards and other PPE for distribution. along with the state-provided infrared thermometers and facial surgical masks. We have been distributing that for quite some time now. The Plexiglas Shield Program and the PPE Program through the corporation has ended. However, I still have a small amount of supplies for anybody who hasn't taken advantage of that. I have some goggles, some face shields, a few masks, and a few thermometers. So we feel that with about 90 businesses receiving Plexiglas shields, there certainly was a very good activity level for that program. And I feel that it did make a difference in getting our businesses back open. Again, top priority is to do that. We are also working with many of the businesses that are currently hiring. We have a number of companies of all different industry types that are going to be participating in a virtual job fair. We are working with Indeed.com, which is located in Stamford, Connecticut, to schedule and plan a virtual career fair where individuals can interview with companies over the computer and determine if they're going to be able to go further in that interview process. We've currently identified numerous medical and healthcare-related companies, as well as restaurants, service businesses, small-scale manufacturers, and others. There are a few miscellaneous ones in there who work on this or to promote their vacancies, so that we can help get more people back to work. Just a small handful of those companies has resulted in 50 job openings that they're going to be hiring for. And we hope to have an excellent turnout on August 10. Again, Indeed will be helping us. There is an event created on Facebook to just try to get people who are interested to like it and follow it so that we have a better distribution pattern of outreach. But Indeed job seeker accounts are free. And so anybody can create one if they have access to the internet. And all of the interviews will actually be started online with follow-ups done in person as necessary. And then, again, I do want to thank the council for the approval earlier this month of the incentive program for new development and expansion of existing businesses, which has already received front-page treatment from the spectrum. And I've had many inquiries from especially real estate people. I think that was exceptionally attention-getting for them, for anyone who might be on the fence about pulling the trigger on a new construction project. I think we have a lot to offer and a lot to talk about. And I want to thank the council for unanimously approving that earlier this month. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions or suggestions.
Any questions for Karen?
Thanks for the update, that was good.
No, it looks like Doug's got to answer. Doug?
I've got a quick question.
Karen?
Yes.
Well, you probably have more repulsed on New Milford than most people being economic development. So I want to ask you a couple of questions. One is, since the beginning of March, how many businesses have failed in New Milford?
Well, Doug, Councilman, that is a very good question. I have followed that, as you are probably aware, extremely closely and worked one-on-one with many businesses who've run into various types of financial trouble, employment trouble. We have unfortunately lost three businesses since the start of the COVID crisis, which in many ways is exceptional. Two of those locations have already been either leased or filled with another company. One of them is still available, but I don't anticipate that that will actually be vacant long because of the infrastructure that's in that location. We also have several new businesses that are coming into town from more urban areas. So we actually have new businesses coming in that have identified New Milford as a great opportunity because of the strength of our economy. And again, I tie in the bond rating analysis because we have a very healthy community from an economic perspective. Our folks that live here, while we do have unemployment, it's not as high as other locations. So that means more people are working. More people are willing to spend their money on items that they want and need in our community, and they're very loyal to local business. So I think that puts us in a very favorable light to not only fill the one vacancy remaining, but also take the opportunity to tell our story, which is very strong, to other folks that are looking to move out of more urban areas, like New York City, Boston, other urban areas. Even Carefield County, certain areas are seeing people looking elsewhere in more rural and suburban areas for opportunity.
Just one last quick question, I won't harp on the thing. How many businesses that were planning on opening have delayed opening as well? I know Litchfield Crossing had some businesses that were going to do some shovel-ready kind of projects. Have you seen any delays in any of those?
Actually, Litchfield Crossing pulled their foundation permits just the other day. And I was very engaged with both the Building Department and the Health Department, because they were two restaurants, in making sure that they stayed on schedule. So there have been no delays in their project. Other projects have continued. While they did have some delays earlier, back in March and April, everyone is getting back on track. I've also reached out to all of the leads that we had, that I was working with prior to COVID, to try to get them back on track as well. Some are still in wait-and-see mode, but we've only lost one lead. And actually, I think we can probably do better in the future with a different opportunity. So I think we're actually looking extremely strong in coming out of COVID, or at least this phase of COVID, in a very positive position.
Well, thank you, Karen. Those are a lot of questions that people that have asked me, so I figured I'd ask you about them. Thank you for the update.
Anytime.
Any other questions for Karen?
Dave? Yeah, really quickly. You mentioned you may have some thermometers left. I'm just thinking of my prior experience on the Board of Education. I'm sure they could use them if nobody else wants them. And the other question, similar to Doug, I get asked about quite a bit. Are the storefronts on Bank Street that have the paper all over the windows and things like that? Any status on that?
As I think many of you are aware, who've asked previously, there are the two storefronts, the two connected storefronts on Bank Street with the paper on the windows. I've reached out several times to the owner of the building, who originally, last year, did have plans to reopen a food establishment, coffee shop, cafe-type place. Obviously, that did not materialize. I have not heard from him recently. I have continued to reach out. However, I'm not even sure where their location is right now, if they're in the Northeast or if they are somewhere else. So we will continue to work with them. I've worked very closely with the Bank Street Group and all of the merchants on Bank Street and in the downtown district to do everything humanly possible to not only support the existing businesses that are there, that are struggling, but also to fill any vacant spaces as soon as we know about them. I did send out a message this week in my email blast to ask any landlords who have a vacancy of any size to please let me know. Because we do have many very small, what are called microenterprises, looking for space. And they don't necessarily have a lot of money right now, but these are businesses that can grow. So we will continue to try to matchmake a vacant space with a potential business at every opportunity. But however, some landlords are more difficult to work with than others. And that is par for the course, I guess. But we are still reaching out, still trying to establish contact with everyone.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10. Motion to accept an $800 donation made to Parks and Rec by Mr. Byron Windsor of Buffalo, New York. His donation is to be used to purchase a park bench with a plaque that would be benched and placed in Sega Meadows in memory of Michael John Cavalero. The donation would be placed in the Park Gift Fund. And Parks and Rec would are very pleased to thank him for that and his generosity and hope that we will approve it.
Second. Katie, what about item nine?
I'm sorry, Walter. Item nine was removed because Chris couldn't be with us tonight.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on the donation from Mr. Brian Windsor for the plaque and the park bench that will be at Sega Meadows in memory of Michael John Cavalero. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Everyone, have a good evening.
Have a good night now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sunella.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.